In progress.
Okay, I'd like to get started, call the order, the City of Sebastopol Planning Commission Meeting of October 24th, 2023, and let's start out with roll call.
Commissioner Hanley. Commissioner Ottinger. Commissioner Burns. Vice Chair Fritz.
Here.
And Chair Fernandez.
Here.
Thank you, we do have all members present tonight.
Okay. Okay, move on to item number two, which is comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda, and Director Swannstrom give them instructions.
Sure, so if you are a member in the room and would like to make a comment about an item not on the agenda, not for the agenda, but not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium, you will have three minutes, and Suzie over here has the timer and can let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and if you are online and you would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand in Zoom, it's probably the easiest way, or we'll take a look around and make sure if you can't find that, that we do a check for that, so please, go ahead. And when you get up to the podium, if you could make sure that the button is pushed so that there's a green light showing, that means the speaker is on, so we'll be.
Testing.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michelle, and I live near Dear D's Diner, in the area of Piala Restaurant. I realize that's on your agenda tonight, and my comments are about the presentation of the restaurant and how it's evolved. Originally, it started off applying as a wine bar, it was declined by the city, the city required it to serve full meals, and 20% of the seating had to be, or 20% or less had to be.
And Ms. Kelly, are you, this sounds very much like it's for the agenda item?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's the presentation of the outside window of the restaurant.
Got it, okay.
The story. So it was approved as a wine bar, and the seating was limited to less than 20% of bar seating, it was to serve full meals, and over the, and they were approved to serve alcohol, and then about nine months ago, they were approved to serve takeaway alcohol, so buy a bottle and leave. And since then, we have a restaurant with about 50% of its window with about 100 bottles of alcohol, wine, and the word's bottle shop, so it has really moved from beyond a restaurant to where takeaway bottles of alcohol are sold. And I'm just bringing this to the attention, is if every single restaurant did that, that would reflect on the character of the city. In contrast, Rotten Robbie's across the street, gas station, is not permitted to sell any alcohol, because we decided as a city that it's not a good idea to drive up to a gas station, buy a bottle and leave. So I'm, as a neighbor of the restaurant, I am asking that the amount of alcohol displayed be reduced, bottle or two, five bottles, but 100 bottles feels excessive, and it's a school route for children as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and per protocol, I do not see anyone on the Zoom who might have a public comment, so we'll come back to the room.
Melissa Hanley, I'm a member of the DRB Board, and we had a public, a member of the public come to us this afternoon and share some concerns about the improvements in Ives Park, namely like an eight-foot wide thoroughfare through the area where events are held, and apparently there's some really high curbing that's been put in, and it's a serious trip hazard. This really strikes home, my mother-in-law tripped and fell in Ives Park about a year ago and broke her arm, and so this feels like this is making this worse and not better, so I'd love to hear about future improvements to diminish this trip hazard, and what are we doing to ensure that members of our public don't get hurt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who has any comments not on the agenda? Okay.
Okay, go ahead and close public comments from items not on the agenda, did you want to respond to any of the comments?
Sure, so I think I can talk about the Piala, that is not, any changes to that is not part of tonight's agenda, which is true, so thank you, Michelle. And it, sorry, thank you, Piala, the, so that's not part of the consideration for tonight's hearing, if you, if the commission wanted to, they could discuss that, but it would require kind of follow-up from staff to work on that. And in terms of Ives Park, so yes, we do know that there were past trip hazards, what is there right now is because we're replacing the entire pathway, looks like it's built up, but it won't be, it shouldn't be at the end, I will talk with the city engineer on that, but that was not the design. The reason, and just so you understand, the reason why it is sort of going through what's the gathering space right now, which is to continue to it, but there needs to be an ADA path from the picnic area that's there up through the park, those ADA picnic tables and barbecue area were just installed a number of years ago, but obviously don't have an ADA path to them, and so this was, was part of that, so when the, when it's not in use as a gathering place, which is once a week during the summer, or once or twice a week during the summer, it will eventually lead from the, an entry at the southwest corner, which is at Jewel, if you all recall Jewel and Willow, potentially capturing some of the street to incorporate that into the park and the new entry, and so that would be part of that entry, and so that's why it's in that route. The reason it's the width, eight feet, which is a nice sort of passing side by side, but it might seem a little wide, is because we need to get our maintenance trucks in there as well, especially with the fact that it's a gathering area, there's a lot of cleanup and maintenance that needs to be done. I will say one of the things we're doing is taking a bunch of asphalt out, some of which has already come out by the, by the creek as part of the later phases, and between the creek and the pool building, and we're reducing the asphalt, that's kind of where the corner of the veterans parking lot meets the park as well. So overall, I think there's about a 5,000 square foot reduction in asphalt paving in the park overall, and the concept that the, but the planning commission has seen as their parks commission hat, as well as the city council, so.
Great, thank you for that. On to item number three, statements of conflict of interest.
Yes, I live within 500 feet of the subject property, so I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, and that's for item 5A, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, before we get to approval minutes, I'd like to ask the commission, if possible, if you could turn on your videos, I think it's good for public viewing. And, okay, move on to approval minutes of April 25th, 2023, anyone have any changes or additions to the minutes? Okay.
I don't.
Yeah, that's okay. Turn your mic on, please.
Thank you. On page two, down at the bottom. There's, I don't know, so there's this dialogue between myself and Carrie that's a little bit vague, so my third comment from the bottom, so then, do we need that condition about the exterior lights? I think the next sentence would say, can we just strike that then? And then my last sentence at the bottom of the page, I hope I didn't say that like that, because it doesn't really read very well. I'm not sure what the question, I don't know, it's just kind of confusing, this is the standard conditions of approval, this is project-specific, I wasn't quite sure what I'm trying to say there. I think we were talking about the lighting and.
Yeah, Paul, I think you were trying to clarify whether it was in the, in the specific conditions versus the standard conditions, and given the fact that it's a clarification, it's, it's not substantive, it can be just struck out if you.
Okay, that's fine, we can just strike that then, because it might sound like I'm confused, maybe I was.
Yeah, no, that's, it was, because I think, I think we had something because of that particular project and the issues with the lighting.
Yeah.
On, in the specific conditions, but also the standard, yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to strike that and strike your, your response to my gibberish, that would be fine.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, clarifications are not necessary in a set of minutes.
Okay.
The actions and the substantive comments.
Yeah, okay, that's, that was my only comment on those.
Anyone want a motion?
I do, I'm sorry, I do have a question about the minutes.
Sure.
I noticed that obviously they're several months behind, is there a reason for that, or is it just because it has to be reviewed first outside of this room?
There is a reason, a lot of it has to do with the planning department staffing, we were without a, well, we didn't have a planning technician until July 1st, she's not doing the minutes, but she's, there's been a lot of, she's helping us track and make sure we get caught up on all the minutes.
Okay.
We do have an outside person who's doing it, and she takes, you know, usually about three weeks or so for, to get a set, and then it needs to be agendaized and whatnot after that, so it takes about a month on a normal basis to get minutes back to you. So we're slowly getting caught up on those, as for, yeah, so we were without a staff person in that admin position, which is now the planning tech for about a year and a half.
Okay, I'm set, thank you.
Yeah, it's not our goal to be that far behind.
Yes, go ahead.
If there aren't any other comments, I'd like to approve, I move that we approve the minutes with the deletion.
Okay, you have a motion for approval of the minutes, we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and second, and call for the vote.
Sure, Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns? Thank you, and that was a yes. Commissioner Hanley?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you. So that motion passes for zero, it's one abstention of Commissioner Hanley.
Okay, it's also on the agenda, says approval of June 23rd minutes, but that should be May 23rd, so.
Correct, so we should move that to the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll just move that to the next time. Okay, and start with item 5A, so before we get started, Seth, if you want to, give you a minute.
And Seth, same thing, we'll come and grab you when we're done with this item.
Okay, so item 5A is Piala Conditional Use Permit, 7233 Hillsborough Avenue, and before I have staff give a report, I wanted to just go through the procedures for this, this item and for the usual for items. So at this point, we were going to have a presentation of staff, summary report, and then commission will ask questions of staff, after that, the applicant will give an opportunity to speak, and then commissioners ask questions of the applicant, and then bring it back, after that, then we open it for public comment, and Planning Director Swannstrom will give you the details and directions as to how to do that. At that point, we close public comment, bring it back to commission for additional questions, comments, and for deliberation, so just wanted to make sure that was the procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start off with a brief staff report, so this is a request to amend the conditional use permit of Jeff Berlin and Lola Sheldon, with Jeff being the main applicant, Mr. Sheldon is here this evening representing that. The, as a brief background, as all of you know, because you were on the commission at the time, but for those who might not, this is a restaurant at 7231 Hillsborough Avenue, applied for alcohol use permit in 2022, it was originally denied by staff due to it being, having the structure of a bar, as well as some public complaints and concerns that we received. The deny, the denial was appealed by Mr. Sheldon, who also revised the application to remove any concerns related to it being a bar versus a bona fide restaurant, and that use permit was heard by the planning commission in July. The commission approved the permit, but it was appealed with a number of operating conditions, it was appealed by a member of the public, and city council heard the appeal in August, and the city council did uphold the planning commission's approval at that time, I believe they had ju, I can't recall if they adjusted any of the conditions or not, I believe they did, but the, part of the conditions of approval require that any changes, any of the initial changes that the applicant might have to the conditions could not be done within the first year, there needed to be a minimum of one year of operations prior to the applicant requesting it and modifications. The restaurant opened shortly there. Do you have it muted? All right, I'll try that, that, that sounds good, cool, thank you. The, so the restaurant has been open for over a year, and the applicant has requested the removal of a few conditions of approval, and those are listed in the original staff report, not the addendum, but they are listed as removing the conditions of approval related to Mr. Lowell's ability to consume alcohol, which is, I believe, condition, I don't have them listed here, the restriction that prevents him from drinking alcohol at the restaurant, the basis for that is that he needs to understand the offerings of the restaurant, the other request is to remove the restrictions regarding, preventing Lowell from working at the restaurant, and the basis for that is so that the Jeff Berlin, who was here to present before you, could take vacation and sick days, and that there needed to be sufficient coverage. So on that basis, we, the planning department has done reviews periodically, we did have a public review with the planning commission after the first quarter of it being, of the restaurant being opened, and then since then, we have been monitoring periodically, as, and actually, I stopped by to date to ensure that, yes, indeed, the conditions are still posted, the, it's still the 20% tables, I mean, 20% bar, and the rest of the seating is tables, it's exactly what they had proposed, I believe, in their original condition in that regards, other than the, the sale of the, the bottle shop area, which was approved by the planning commission since then. So in terms of potential revisions to the condition of approval, we did have a staff report out for last, last meeting, I did in the interim get some questions and had some discussion with commissioners, we've also received a number of public comments, and with that, we did prepare a addendum that kind of focuses what the, any changes to the conditions, to be clear that it is, as the original city council resolution states, that after one year, Lowell Sheldon may request the planning commission review the permit to see if he may be allowed to consume as a member of the, alcohol as a member of the public, so some of the questions that came up is how do we make sure that it's a member of the dining public? So on page two of the report is the staff recommended language for the commission to review, which we feel clarifies, and I have reviewed these with our city attorney, that this does clarify that, and I'll just read it, Lowell Sheldon shall be allowed to consume alcohol only on the premises as a member of the dining public, and only when another owner is present, this shall only be allowed during hours the restaurant is open to the public, and while not in duty in any way, the, and in that regard, the conditions of approval already note that employees need to be alcohol and drug-free while on duty, so it's consistent with that. That wording would replace the restriction of not being able to consume alcohol or serve it in any capacity on the premises. For the second condition, the ability to basically work shifts, so the onsite, as the onsite manager, when the owner, when the other owner is on a scheduled vacation or unavailable due to illness, we have provided language, not deleting the entire condition as was requested, this is condition number two of the original conditions by the applicant, but, so that Jeff Berlin would still be the owner and responsible for all of the hiring, training, management's reviews, formal discipline or termination of employees, also the one coordinating any fielding review or investigation of employee complaints, so Mr. Sheldon would not be involved with that, but adding a condition that notwithstanding those items, Lowell Sheldon shall be permitted to work shifts to provide coverage for Jeff Berlin, that this shall be limited to working shifts as an onsite manager when Jeff Berlin is on a scheduled vacation or unavailable due to illness, and so that limits it to what the, the basis for the request, which was that there needed to be a little bit more coverage for, for Jeff Berlin when he's on vacation or out sick. And so those are the, the two main modifications, the requirement for staff review of the conditional use permit was also requested to be removed, we feel that that should be, or should be modified so that the planning department still reviews that after six months, and then after one year, and then after that, if everything is fine, obviously, you can always recall a use permit if we have complaints from the community, but then, but it wouldn't be a forever basis. And then we are also recommending, and the applicant has not suggested this, but we're also recommending that the outside HR firm be retained, I did contact them, and I have a couple times throughout the process to see if there had been any complaints, and if so, if they had been resolved, and they have not received any complaints over the last year. And then also just modifying the condition related to personnel on duty not being, consuming alcohol or drugs while on duty, it did say employees, and we're recommending that should just say personnel, since that's really what the intent was. So I think I'll leave my staff report at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from commission? Go ahead.
I just have one question regarding that last issue, you know, since we already have the condition about no personnel being able to, you know, should be drug and alcohol free, do we need to have a separate condition, just, you know, the condition three, or would that be, I guess I'm just trying to decide, you know, do we need both, or can we have just that one condition that would cover everybody?
Right, the condition three, well, the question that came up is, and I don't know if you've ever worked in a restaurant, but I have, and my sister has owned a restaurant and, you know, managed a restaurant, but having worked in a restaurant, there is a period of time, you know, when you're closing up shop, basically, when are you done with the shift and just hanging out, and so that, that came up as a question of like, if the city council adopted final conditions for this, stated that he, Mr. Sheldon could come back and request to consume alcohol as a member of the public, well, is that, like, how, how do we just make it very clear what that means? And so the condition number three is trying to be very specific in saying, this is when, as a member of the public, when the restaurant is open to the public, so it's not in that, well, I'm not on duty anymore because it's after shift, which can be a, you know, it's whether you drink with your boss or not, it's, it could be a gray area, and so we just wanted to be perfectly clear.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just, kind of the same question as to, so as a member of the dining public, does that mean he has to sit out in the public area, consume, so he can't consume if he's working, like, just to clarify that.
Sorry, yes, yes, so no one can consume alcohol when they're working, that's, that's already a regulation, like I said, it already is, it's condition 17, we're requesting to clarify that language from employee to personnel, because it's, should be any personnel, the, so yeah, so you can't, you know, he wouldn't, I don't think he would want to, but you can't sit in the back room and drink where the staff is working, or some, some other place, the intent is that he be able to understand the offerings of the restaurant, being able to taste them with the food that's being, coming out of the kitchen, and that kind of a thing, and that seems like a very reasonable way to do it, just like any member of the public would, that they're serving.
And during that time, there will be other employees there, right, that he will have interaction with?
Correct, so this would be the other owner, Jeff Berlin would need to be present at those times, so, you know, because it's one or the other, as, as has been described, and the applicant may be able to address this, but Jeff is the onsite manager pretty much any time unless Mr. Sheldon is allowed to work and carry some of those shifts when he's on vacation or sick, so it's going to be one of the two, Mr. Sheldon can only drink when, as a member of the public, A, when he's not on duty, which means Jeff is on duty, but also when Jeff is there in case, you know, there's a third manager or something hired at some point.
Okay, and, let's see, and while, yeah, so if Jeff's on vacation?
Then Mr. Sheldon would be allowed to work shifts, but he would not be able to drink as a member of the public, for both the reasons that, of this condition and the fact that he's the person in charge and working, and that's not appropriate.
Okay, all right, any other questions, staff? Okay, at this point, if the applicant wants to say anything, you're free to do so.
Thank you for the time to speak, dear planning commission, thank you for hearing the request to remove certain conditions from our use permit, though these conditions were not guaranteed to be removed, it has always made sense to remove them, should we operate our business without issue for one year? We have, and we now ask that these be removed. Our first hearing, two weeks, for our first hearing two weeks ago, Carrie submitted a staff report supporting the removal of all conditions we requested, we were thankful she did that, it was the right call, we viewed it as a welcome step forward for the City of Sebastopol, which has no business regulating the micro operations of its businesses. Unfortunately for all of us, that hearing was delayed because there was not a quorum. On Friday, Carrie submitted an updated staff report suggesting a very convoluted mixture of removal and amendments, she says she did this because of requests from commissioners, we do not support these amendments, please keep it as simple, remove the conditions we requested for removal while keeping in place the reasonable conditions that we maintain in HR firm to help us manage staff complaints moving forward. There is a temptation in small, smaller towns and communities to attempt to manage affairs in a way that is reflective of how a family might manage affairs, this is clearly what has led the Sebast, City of Sebastopol, to the City of Sebastopol believing it had the authority to regulate my consumption of alcohol and my ability to work at my business, even though I had no convictions or records of any crimes, nor did I, it have any hard evidence that I had even done any of the things I was accused of, what existed were salacious stories from a group who learned to hate me, but we all know, this is not evidence. Imagine for a moment if my situation did not fit neatly into a social movement called Me Too, which inspired all liberal minds to simply believe, and was rather some more banal crime such as murder, imagine if I had been accused of murder, imagine if I had been accused but not investigated, accused but never investigated or charged, simply accused, would Sebastopol? Would Sebastopol still have felt so righteous in its ability to judge and punish? I assume it would not, because the liberal mind is typically hesitant to jump to conclusions when it comes to crime and punishment. It is, as it should be, skeptical of the concept of guilty until proven innocent, because as we know, it is the antithesis of our society. It is contrary to everything we love and believe in, and yet, within the Me Too movement, it has become the norm. We should all reject that. I want to address my former employee Leah's letter to you all. She submitted a letter and the press Democrat asked me about the letter. I said Leah doesn't know the first thing about me. I haven't seen or spoken to her in five years. Here's my perspective on Leah. Her crusade to hold me accountable for a wide array of thought crimes makes me think time and time again of the social philosopher Greg Lukianoff and Jonathan Haidt and their book, The Coddling of the American Mind. Leah spoke to the SF Chronicle two years ago, saying that she and other employees were hurt when I did not cancel my coffee subscription to Four Barrel, because one of their founders had been accused of an array of poor decisions around how he ran his business. Imagine if an employee gets to make final decisions on how any business owner runs their business, simply because they disagree with their philosophy. I felt it was important to support Four Barrel through a hard time. She wanted to cancel a subscription. I wanted to support their work, she wanted to cancel them. Philosophical differences, but the real crux for Leah is that she couldn't handle that I had a different opinion and that my opinion was valid and that it was my business. And moving forward, just seeing the coffee traumatized her. In other words, the coddling of the American mind. In her letter to the commissioners, she states, I am guilty of the most heinous crime imaginable, rape. Not that anyone has ever accused me of that directly, she just thought it sounded really bad, so she put it in her letter. The fact is, in seven years of working for me, Leah never witnessed me harassing anyone. This is the core principle of the Me Too movement. Accuse people of the worst, knowing that you don't need to prove anything and the impact will be lasting. Going down my line of accusers, this is true. Wild accusations lobbed out and the effects have been lasting. But each and every time, the exaggerations are profound and the lies are plentiful. Thankfully, we are not here to relitigate all of that. We are simply here to remove a few conditions that we have lived with for one year and it is time to move beyond. In closing, I will remind you that I have moved on with my life. I am opening a new business in Santa Rosa next week, Towns Restaurant, in the old Third Street Ale Works building, a 7,000 square foot restaurant with many dozens of employees, many times the size of Piala. There are no special conditions that control me personally at this new business. This is how it should be, and yet, we still have an HR firm helping us, not because we are required to, but it, because it is the right thing to do. You all have the chance to take a small step towards correcting Sebastopol's missteps, to turn Sebastopol, to return Sebastopol to the job of legally regulating business activity and not punishing individuals based on unproven accusations that are part of a powerful internet movement. Let the courts deal with crime and punishment and let the planning commission deal with zoning and use permits. Thank you.
Thank you. We have questions from commission to the applicant? Okay. All right, at this point, I will open up a public comment and Dr. Johnson will give you instructions.
Yes, so again, we'll do, the city's practice is to do one person from the room and then one person from Zoom if we have any. So if there's anyone in the room who'd like to come up, please do so and you will have three minutes. Please, come on up. Oh, okay, it sounds like we might need a five minute recess?
Let's do that. Yeah, we're gonna have a five minute recess before we go into a public comment.
Yeah, so we'll have a five minute recess and Zach, can you put up a card for that? Thank you. So there's a five minute recess, we'll be starting public comment after that. And so, Suzy, we can pause the recording, yeah, don't stop, we'll have to do two recordings.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, that is the pause, that's fine. We would, um, I don't know if they do, there is a, right, 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 right. I kind of went through this with the planning commission, did not have that either, and that was always kind of odd, but they, I always went by what they would, because they kind of knew.
Yeah.
So, but they, they sort of operate differently. The planning commission, the alternate could attend, could attend the meetings, but couldn't vote.
Yeah.
Unless someone left the room, in which case that's, actually, it changes the quorum, so that would, would do it. A lot of that was because, you know, when you're very in policy and stuff, you need to be part of the discussion, which is kind of how the office was being handled.
Yeah.
Whether or not technically you could make a motion with all the other board members, probably not.
Yeah.
So, but his vote would actually count with the, I don't want to look up the abstention, but I think it's fine. I don't think we have any rules, we would only have what's in the immunity code, which doesn't happen. The planning commission went through that, like, how they're gonna handle the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. No, wait, it's not gonna be in there, it's gonna be in the, I don't, I don't think I remember ever seeing something about to serve at any meeting or on any matter where the absence of a member or in event of a conflict of interest, so that's the quorum.
Yeah.
So, not, yeah. Well, but that kind of says that, no, they shouldn't be unless they're, yeah. So yes, if it was a
Okay, bring this meeting back to order and apologize.
Recording in progress.
We'll go ahead and start with public commenting and
Thank you, and no apologies necessary. Boards and commissions take recesses all the time.
That's okay.
So again, members of the public, if you'd like to comment, if you could, please, at least, as you will, step up to the podium, you'll have three minutes and we'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand with the Zoom reactions component of it. And I will note, we did receive a number of comments both before the, both before the last staff report came out and the interim, those are included in your staff report. We have received, we haven't received any since then, other than a couple that have been forwarded to the commission recently. So anyone from the public who would like to make a public comment? Yes, please do step up to the microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I know this matter has taken way more time from the city and local business people.
Do you put your, your mic a little closer? That's what, you can just adjust it, yeah, thank you.
A little short. Can you hear me? So thank you for the time that you're taking and the consideration, because I know this is an issue that you did not sign up for, but I'll reflect on the health goals of the city, which are outlined in all of the documents. And that's the difference, how you have purview over this, is to ensure that we have a healthy and well community. And that reflects working with businesses and setting up regulations when needed. As a nurse, I'm never allowed to imbibe on my job, so, you know, I can't tell you what oxycontin is like, because I'm not allowed to use it. So that's clear and thank you, staff. I hope you looked at the letters carefully, and I was particularly compelled by the one from the owners of Retrograde. I think they had some really solid points there, and they are a business in our community. So while I understand that the, some people would like to have the regulations continue, I think the most important thing for me is to, to say that no alcohol consumption, no time alone with Lowell Sheldon and employees with alcohol should be permitted. And I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any members of the public online. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to make a public comment? Please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I have a general question and a curious question, not being a business owner in town. I am curious to know about restaurants and bars, if employees are allowed to drink while they're working, owners are allowed to drink while they're working during the hours of, when customers are there and, and or after hours, or what is there, are there laws? I know there's like, the health department comes in and has a lot of laws about cooking your food safely, but I just wonder, I mean, I've been to a lot of, practically every restaurant in Sebastopol and bars included, and, you know, it's, I can't, I can't, I can be sure, I've seen employee, you know, staff drinking and, you know, being in line with doing their job and not out of control, but I just wondered if that was against the law, to drink in your place of business during hours or after hours. And I, lastly, am I on two minutes here? I was looking for the time. I just want to say, lastly, I, I think that the request should be approved for Piala. And I support that restaurant and all that they do, and we've eaten there and have enjoyed the ambiance, the food and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public who'd like to make a comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone online, so.
Okay, go ahead and close public comment and if you want to address the, what you know of, some of those regulations.
Sure, so obviously there is a drinking age, so that's one factor. There is not a set rule of, that it's illegal to drink while you're working at a restaurant or any other thing, although we don't usually issue alcohol license other than to restaurants and bars. The city does have a standard condition of requiring a responsible beverage training for all individuals who are serving alcohol at restaurants or bars, and that's, you know, a standard practice that the city has had for years and years.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, bring back to commission for any questions, clarifications, deliberation. Go ahead.
I'll just say I'm supportive of the language, that is the new language that has come. I think this is a serious issue. I'm pleased to see that we've gone through a year with nothing reported, I'm very grateful for that. I would just be horrified if something else happened. And I think that by restricting alcohol, we can be sure that the employees at this restaurant are healthy and safe.
Okay. Anyone else, questions or, go ahead.
I don't really have a question per se, but one of the things that the lawyer explained to me, the Sebastopol city lawyer, when we were first looking into it, it's not really for us to decide, it's not on the table here tonight, whether or not, you know, Mr., oh, can you, that's funny, can you hear me now? So it's not for us to decide, you know, there is nobody, this is not our place to decide if something did or didn't happen, so that's really not on the table here. What the law is in Sebastopol is that it's an, it's an odd law, it's probably not in Santa Rosa where your other business is, if there's any, is it reasonable doubt or, or doubt of any public safety with a, with a alcohol license, that we as the commission, you know, have to deny it. So that's what it is, so it, it's not whether something happened or not, if there's a doubt. So I feel like, you know, the same way, I'm very grateful that nothing has happened this year. I'm also in a line with the woman who spoke, the nurse, where I'm, being a business owner, I have never drank at work or with an employee. I don't know any person in a company, if you work at, you know, where they're like, oh, can I have a beer and hang out? And it's just, it's mind boggling to me, because professionally, I would not want to drink around my team members. I want them to view me as, you know, as their boss, as a leader, as a team member that, that they can go to and feel comfortable with. It's not a social place for me, it's a workplace. And, you know, nor would I ever let them drink or use at work unless there was some medical, you know, we have had people who've had medical marijuana and they had to use it for, for health reasons, so, you know, I just So, you know, I just feel like the workplace isn't a place for that. But I still have reasonable doubt for the safety of team members at the restaurant, because, you know, honestly, I was absolutely gobsmacked by everything that was said. It just really took me back, because it was literally taking away the whole Me Too movement that women have spent so many years trying to be heard. Do you realize how many, how many women out of 10 do you think have been sexually assaulted in America? Do you have any idea? I mean, it's an alarming number, so you may not have done anything. I have no idea. I'm not here to decide that. But to take down a Me Too movement as a social media, you know, and that is just showing me that you don't get it. I don't know if you understand. And it makes me be worried if there was alcohol involved. And, you know, there wasn't, we do not want to do this. I didn't even, I was, I don't want to do this. It's not why I joined the planning commission. But the very first time that we all met here, there wasn't one person with an accusation. There were many, 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 many members. And, you know, another third party, I mean, when I was here, that's what I heard. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, if you could keep your comments.
I mean, but that was my experience, you know, as well as, I mean.
So, Mr. Sheldon, this is not an interactive process? If you could please respect the chair's request to be quiet.
I'm just saying that that was my experience. There was more than one person, you know. I'm sorry, I remember more than one person. I'm just my memory. Anyway, regardless, and letters that I read from the public, there was more than one person, as well as, you know, there was an outside, you know, private investigator who was hired for the allegations from your, from the other, I mean, you know what, it doesn't matter. I really feel like minimizing everything that happened isn't the way forward. But like, you know, the way forward is, I'm not comfortable with having alcohol. I don't even understand the necessity. It's like, exactly, nurses are giving out oxycodone, but if you're going to take oxycodone, you're going to get fired. I mean, I've just, I don't understand the necessity to have to do that. So I just think in the best of public interest and safety, I, because of the law, because of what we are asked to do by the city of Sebastopol, that's where, that's where I stand.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I guess, start by saying that I think, you know, again, none of us thought we'd be in this position this kind of way. I also don't think the city needs to micromanage every business in town. It's not what we're here for. I will say, I am also disturbed by Mr. Sheldon's portrayal of the Me Too movement. But that isn't really necessarily related to his running of this business. But it's really hard to put things like that aside. My recommendation is that you speak as little as possible, because you don't do yourself any favors when you speak in public. Because we're trying to approve this for you. And when we hear language and comments like that, it makes us second-guess ourselves. So this back and forth doesn't work for us. I would recommend you stay quiet the rest of the hearing until you're spoken to and asked to make another comment. I also agree that I generally, I don't drink at work. I don't see why it's necessary to drink at work. I understand you run a restaurant and a bar. I haven't worked in a restaurant and bar environment. I don't know if it's typical for the people to drink while they work. It seems like it's not generally a good idea. People's judgment and things happen when they drink alcohol. So again, even though I don't like micromanaging businesses, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing in this situation. You can always come forward in the future and ask for the condition to be modified again. But I don't see a problem with the conditions as staff has proposed this evening. At this point, I guess, is another interim step in kind of this use permits life. That's kind of where I stand. So I guess at this point, I'm proposed to approve staff's recommendation to allow Mr. Sheldon to drink when the restaurant is open as a member of the public. And I'm open to him working in the restaurant in order to allow his partner some breaks. Although, again, personally, I find that a little bit of a weak justification. I know plenty of small restaurants in town close for a couple of weeks every year, so the owners can take a vacation. I mean, sometimes that happens with a small business. But I'm willing to let that happen in this situation. So I think that's where I stand at the moment.
Okay, and just a clarification, I think there is not going to be allowed drinking while working.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But I, typically, I wouldn't want to think we need to put that on as a condition. Or I don't think we generally put that on as a condition. It's not a standard condition of approval that I recall for restaurants, is it?
It is not standard.
So my hope would be that we generally don't do that. But because of the situation, and I understand Mr. Sheldon denies anything that's happened, but I also don't know why it's necessary, you know, why you would need to drink while you're at work. You can drink as a member of the public and taste the food and taste the wine offerings. You can take it home if you like and drink at home and taste the wine that you're offering. I don't know why it has to happen at work.
Yeah, just one question. Go ahead, recognize you.
I've never requested that I can be allowed to drink while working. I have never drank while working. This is not a thing. Nobody's accusing me of drinking while working. This is just you guys creating things to look like you're doing something. But it's not a thing. I never drank while working. I'm not asking you to drink while working. What I would ask is that you don't create, like, make up reasons, create things that apply to me but not other businesses. That's all that I would request. But it's, it's all going to happen. I'm not, whatever. You can say I can't drink while working. I won't drink, I never have, and we'll just move on.
Okay. Go ahead. No. Okay. Well, yeah, same, you know, some of the similar comments as far as what our responsibilities are. There is something very clear that talks about the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And that could mean a number of things. Whether, do we feel that it's, the public's going to be safe? No, there have been no convictions, but a lot of accusations. And although that may not be fair, it's something that we need to take into consideration as far as the safety of our community. You know, I think that, you know, with Commissioner, what Paul said, I also agree with, that, you know, we're trying to decide here about these items. And, you know, what I hear is, you know, that you've done nothing wrong, whereas in the past, you said that you made some mistakes and made some inappropriate behavior. That's what we're talking about. And we just want to make sure that does not happen in that environment. Because, you know, ultimately, we would be responsible in a way, whether it's maybe not legally, but if something were to happen, you know, it's something that we should be concerned about. So we're not trying to micromanage businesses. We look at every business differently. Some businesses have different stipulations based on, you know, could be, you know, the number of cars going through there, or, you know, any number of things to make it safer for the community that we put stipulations on. So just wanted to clarify that.
Chair Fernandez, if I may, just because I had a lot of, I had a lot of conversations with the city attorney in the original. And so just, the alcohol use permit is treated differently here in Sebastopol than in other communities. The main consideration that I think both Commissioner Burns and yourself are referencing is that the planning commission or city council on appeal shall consider whether the proposed use will adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of area residents, or will it result in an undue concentration in the area due to the sale or dispensation for sale or other consideration regarding alcoholic beverages, including beer and wine. And so, yes, the, we are not deciding whether or not someone's guilty or not, but there was valid public testimony, is kind of the phrase that was in the original hearing that I think you're, both you and Commissioner Burns are referencing.
Can I say something? Wait, am I on? You can't hear me back there. I think something that's very confusing to me maybe would be the different language structure that we use. Like when you say, "We're looking for work to do and to make things up to, you know, false," you know, whatever it was that you said. Trust me when I tell you that none of us want to be involved in this. None of us are looking for work. So even minimizing us all being here tonight against my will, I did not want to be here, you know, feels a little bit like you're not getting the levity. And it makes me feel a little bit like what some of these women must feel like who've come forward. And even you're arguing with me about my experience, I, you know, about there was more than one person there, makes me, for a minute, I was thinking I'm crazy, but I reviewed that whole last thing and I reread every single letter. And there was many letters from women claiming and, you know, from drinking on to cocaine to like all kinds of things and lots of accusations about sexual abuse. So I'm not saying they're true, but I'm just saying, you know, you're saying this never even happened. And, you know, it's hard for me to be, I'm trying, you know, like, one of the commissioners said, like, "We want to do this. We don't want to be involved in this. None of us want to micromanage." But it's hard to work with, because it just doesn't feel like there's, I don't know, like there's a recognition or like some type of, it's like a different experience on your side than, you know, than what, than what the letters from the city and what we had said. So I just want to reiterate, nobody here is accusing, or no one here is accusing you of anything, nor do we know that anything ever did happen. We're just saying, this is the information we were given. What do we do with that information? Do we err on the cautious side? You know, if it didn't happen and you just said you don't want to drink at work, then this is great. Nothing is an issue. Don't drink at work, they'll be safe, life is good. It seems like this is much to do about nothing. You know, if it did happen, then great, we're keeping peace. So either way, if you don't want to drink at work, I think, can we just wrap this up? Because that's great. I would like to move on.
Okay.
I would like to move that we approve this use permit amendment as, with the conditions as modified by staff.
Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Okay, are there any further discussions? Okay, we call for the vote.
Sure, Chair Fernandez.
No.
Vice Chair Fritz.
Aye.
Commissioner Burns.
No.
Commissioner Ottinger.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a tie vote. A tie vote means that the motion fails. So at that point, you can continue deliberations. It would be helpful to obviously get to some resolution.
Okay. So do we need some kind of findings or something for denial?
So at this point, I would encourage continued discussion, and particularly, probably with the commissioners who voted no, if there are changes to the conditions that would allow, or to one of the conditions that would allow.
I don't want to try to change any other commissioners' minds, because I respect them so deeply and I really honor their opinion. And so I just don't want to do that. But there really is nothing that can change my mind. I feel like he walked in here, you know, and, I mean, first, everything, you know, going to the newspaper and saying it was already approved and, you know, talking about something that never happened. I personally wouldn't talk to the press, but that's none of our business. But then giving a whole speech about the Me Too movement, which really, I was hoping to walk in here and approve this. I was hoping we saw someone who a year later walked in and said, "You know what, guys? Nothing has happened. I'd like to be able to drink at my establishment. I'm here tonight, you know, to say, it's been a great year, let's move on." But it really shocked me. And then, you know, we can all watch the video, there was more than one, you have the letters. I mean, everything he said was untruthful. And so I just can't, in my heart, if there's any, you know, say that, I can say there won't be any potential issue to the public safety. I don't know that there will, but I, you know, it's working so far, so I'd rather, he said, "I don't even want to drink at work." Great, great, then, you know.
But I just, and I'm certainly not trying to defend him, but, you know, he does want to work. So, I mean, part of, the one condition is about the alcohol, and he's such fine, he doesn't want to consume alcohol, but he would like to be, have the opportunity to work on a very limited basis. I mean, I was willing to come in here to say, "I think he should be able to work whenever he wants." I had the same response with his attitude and his statements. So I decided to just support the staff's recommendations instead. But I think if we feel that he's, you know, clearly, he's not allowed to drink, the employees aren't allowed to drink, that's a more severe, you know, condition than we typically put on a restaurant. And his only work opportunities is to substitute for when his partner is on vacation or sick, that's still a fairly severe limitation, I think, on his ability to, you know, run this restaurant as a business owner. So that's why I'm personally comfortable with supporting staff's recommendations.
Okay. Yeah, my hesitancy is, you know, he doesn't seem to recognize what has been brought up here. And a lot of the issues have been with alcohol, him drinking, and employees being there, whether he's working or not, even just sitting as a member of the public. And that's why we had the human resource person, that he makes individuals feel uncomfortable. You know, whether it's some of the things, are legalities or not, certainly, the majority of them are inappropriate behavior. And so that's my concern, that, okay, so now he's going to be a member of the public drinking, and he's actually the boss of the, whatever employees are there. And a lot of the complaints have been around with him drinking or after drinking or so forth. So that's my concern of that. You know, having him work there against some of the same issues, but I, you know, I don't feel comfortable having him there in public drinking and with the potential of causing issues that that's what they're based on.
So, can I ask a question then? So if he were not allowed to dine in the restaurant and have alcohol as a customer, period, would that satisfy you?
Yeah.
And then if it were stipulated that, and I don't know what the lawyers will think about this, that if he's in the restaurant, whether he's on duty or off duty by the clock, as long as there's an employee there, he is not drinking. Because I think that eliminates the issue, you know, which could have happened before if he's dining for the last year and someone's waiting. He could still have the same attitude toward them.
Yeah. And again, you know, not to put, you know, like I said, micromanaging, but looking at his record, whether he's, you know, conviction or not, it's those complaints of those employees, of that many employees, that makes me feel, and again, I said this at the first hearing, would I feel comfortable having my daughter work there with him? And the answer is no, I would not. You know, whether that's fair or not, it's just, you know, based on that. And again, many instances where the alcohol was involved. So yes, I would feel more comfortable with that part of it. You know, still don't feel totally comfortable, again, the whole issue is with him not having interaction with employees, but I'm willing to, you know, to go with that part of it. The other issue is, you know, he had to take these certain classes and so forth, you know, he did one of the classes like a week ago, two weeks ago. So again, in his mind, is it's that he's not done anything wrong, even though in the past, he's admitted of his inappropriate behavior. So that's my hesitancy.
Can I add something to that? I was going to. I was going to say that as well, but I didn't want to say it while Mr. Shelton was here and just have it be. Oh, but I was, you know, it's like, there were so many people that came forward. It seems unusual for that to be a coincidence, who worked at different restaurants, different years, different time periods with different stories. And so I guess, you know, you don't need my vote because if you have, you know, Chair Fernandez, you're fine. But I guess, you know, you're always in a position of power when you own a business. And whether or not you're drinking when you walk in that door, let me tell you, people either scurry or they get back to work or they get nervous or they, you know, and so if he's working there and he's in a position of power, you know, honestly, I feel like he needs to watch that first video because his other partners in other restaurants bought him out because they hired an independent investigative team who believed the survivors. So I'm not saying I believe it, but like this is, we can't rewrite history here and tell me that I'm crazy. And so, you know, that's a no-go for me. As far as him working, and you guys can do what you want. I find that also contrary, he seems to always talk out of both sides. It's like, he said he's opening a 7,000 square foot restaurant in Santa Rosa. And, you know, that's a big undertaking. And so, you know, he's going to run that restaurant and then come over here so that he can have a vacation and be split, you know. Ultimately, it seems to me like they'll probably have a different solution. Like it can't just be all on, I mean, I said this at the first meeting, aren't you going to need Mr. Shelton to come so you can have a day off? I mean, watch the video. They were like, no, I can work seven days a week and we already are shut down this and blah, blah, blah. And I was like, this seems unsustainable to me. So, you know, I just, it would feel better to me if in a position of power, he wasn't drinking and there's this outside HR department. I think it's fantastic that nothing has happened. But, you know, I think if you walk before you run and if that's what you guys decide to do, at least you'll have some more time knowing, hey, he worked here with people, they felt comfortable with him, and then, you know, do whatever about the drinking later. But.
So just, and just to clarify, the suggestion Commissioner Ottinger is to leave the alcohol prohibition in place, but allow the working of shifts, is written in the staff report? Is that the, is that what you were speaking to?
Yes, I guess I'm trying to work with Everett here because you're concerned about alcohol at all, even while he's dining and now he's working with staff.
Well, that, yeah.
In the same breath.
That's definitely a concern. I mean, I also have concern about just him being there, working with employees based on what's happened. And, you know, and again, it's maybe a lot of hearsay, but like she said, they're our business partners that said they don't want to have anything to do with him.
They fixed the problem and now we're trying to fix the problem to protect.
And the reality is, it's not us. It's not, it's unfortunate that the other owners can't go on vacation, but that's, he brought that on and the owners are the ones that chose to have him as a partner. So it's not us that are making this unreasonable. We're just doing our job.
That's what I said. I would have done my due diligence before, you know, find another, another way. And it's not just that, they didn't let him on the premise to work without alcohol because this independent company, it's all in the report, it's all public, you know. So, you know, I would say alcohol is a no-go, which doesn't even seem like it's an issue for him. He doesn't, he said, you know, so.
No, he said while he's working.
And that's the issue because even in the parking lot or in the grocery store, you're still the boss.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we can't control that.
No, no, absolutely.
I think if there are employees on the premises, and that's the word, that includes a parking lot, that's where I would stand.
The basketball is so small. My daughter's a local doctor and she'll see her patient when she's having a drink and she's like, oh my gosh, yeah, it is what it is.
It is.
Okay, so you're, Kathy, can you maybe just?
I think he has to approve the language because I already approved what we have.
Got it. Okay, yep. Well, you can, you can make another motion. Anyone can make new motions.
I mean, I'll make a suggestion, even though I won't vote for it, but I think what they're, what you're trying to come to is that, you know, he can't drink alcohol on the premise, you know, as a member of the public or a staff member, but he can work when, you know, as a team member and as a boss, because he would be the acting manager, when the other, that's what I think I hear you saying. Is that correct?
Yes, with this stipulation, as long as employees are on the premises, he can't drink.
Oh, you said he can drink?
Cannot.
Cannot.
Cannot drink. I mean, he can do all those other things. He just have to remove alcohol.
Yeah.
From the situation if there's an employee on the premises. Just.
Okay, so, so what I am hearing, just to make sure that I'm clear, so, and I'm actually going to share my screen with this condition of approval. And I can, we can actually write this up, the alternate that I'm kind of hearing as well. But this is the, move this so I can.
This is yours. Upside down.
Yeah. Okay, so just in terms of the work conditions, because that's, is the language the staff proposed, Kathy, is that what you were?
Number one.
Yeah, number one, which was, and I'm just going to read it because it's a little bit hard to understand with the strikeouts and stuff, if you're kind of reading through it. So applicant shall continue, applicant, the applicant being Jeff Berlin, shall continue to be the owner responsible for personnel-related responsibilities as listed in three A and B below, and shall not permit Lowell Sheldon to exercise personnel-related responsibilities, personnel-related responsibilities related to the hiring, training, management supervision, review, formal discipline or termination of any employee, or the field review, fielding review investigation of or response to any employee complaints or concerns. Notwithstanding the provisions of conditions, A, one A and B above, so in addition to that, outside of that, Lowell Sheldon shall be permitted to work shifts to provide coverage for Jeff Berlin. This shall be limited to working shifts as an onsite manager when Jeff Berlin is on a scheduled vacation or unavailable due to illness. So that's to say, he can work shifts, but he can't be involved with the hiring, training, management, formal discipline, termination of employees, like that, you know, that.
But if he's working at shift and there's an employee, he is involved in management.
So, yeah, so that's the notwithstanding the provisions of condition one A and one B above. So, because there is an understanding, this is, I actually wrote this out with our city attorney. And he actually wrote that part for me, which is why it sounds like it's written by like a lawyer. To, and that's what that means, that obviously Mr. Sheldon would have some management and supervision while he's doing his shifts, but outside of that, he is not doing that.
Okay. And then my question, I have a question regarding, so if he's being monitored in whatever, whatever fashion, how will a complaint be handled? Does it have to be multiple complaints? Is it one person? I mean, you know, because that could legitimate be one person has an axe to grind, don't know. But how do we determine at what point it might be worthy to relook at it or consider it?
So I would say, as I've noted, I have checked with the outside HR firm, both in preparing for tonight's hearing as well as previous, you know, check-ins or whatever they're called, reviews of the use permit. They have not gotten any complaints. I think if they were to get a complaint, I would certainly want them to be able to come, you know, to have that go through to resolution and understand if it was a valid complaint or not. And if it was a valid complaint, then, you know, how serious was it? Or what was the content, the general content of it? I, they have been pretty open discussing that, those things with me so far. If it is a serious complaint, I would bring it back at that time. Not that Commissioner Burns wants to deal with this ever again, but, so not that, not that you want to see it again, but I think at that point, it would be a concern that we would want to bring forward to you.
I do have a question. I was a little confused. He said you approved this at the last meeting and then, and then you talked to commissioners and then you changed it.
So he, I think he was referring to the staff's recommendation, which is not an approval. It's a suggestion to the planning commission.
So, gotcha.
Yeah. And once we had some public comment, as well as some conversation to some commissioners, it was clear that there was some ambiguity there that should just be clarified. So that's where the revised language came about, as well as conversations with our city attorney. And so that's the asked, proposed now, condition related to the work conditions. And so, yeah, maybe we could get through that as one component and then move on to the other.
Are you okay with?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. So you have to make a formal motion, right?
But we want to.
Well, I think you want to figure out the alcohol part separately. I just want to make sure that we maybe take them, the two conditions separately and not.
Got it, got it.
So were there any changes to that condition or is the commission generally supportive of staff's?
I mean, I was fine with the first time around. I'm fine.
Okay, and then moving to the second condition. And so what I have on the screen, and I apologize, it's still a little small, so let me try to make it bigger. The highlight, so that the below is the current, which is struck through as the current condition of approval. Lowell Sheldon shall not serve or consume alcohol in any capacity while on the premises. The, you can go anywhere between keeping that and striking the whole thing and not having anything. Clearly, the commission wants to have something in place. Well, we had suggested that he only be allowed to do it as a member of the dining public only when the owner is present. Commissioner Ottinger, what I'm hearing for you is not just keeping this, but keeping item four, but allowing it when it, no other employees are on premises and the other owner is. Is that, Commissioner Ottinger, what you were?
Well, Everett, what if? I can't read it. You moved it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if he's there with the owners.
Yeah.
If they want to drink, that's fine. But if it's, as long as there's an employees, any employees there, again, just looking back at some of the situations that have happened, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. I think it's, it's a potential problem that based on, again, not, you know, convictions or anything, but based on a lot of people talking. He also said that he never has drank on the job. I would have an issue with that statement because I've seen him drink. So, again, it goes back to character from that standpoint. So I would say, shall not serve or consume alcohol in any capacity while on premise if any employees are present.
I think what he's asking is to be able to perform as a worker when he's there, which might include serving alcohol to the customers. So that's why.
Right, so, yeah, so you, yeah, he, in working shifts, he may need to serve alcohol, yes.
But if number four said Lowell Sheldon shall not consume alcohol in any capacity while employees are on the premises, would that work?
That's, I would be okay.
Because that's what we're trying to protect.
Yeah.
The only issue that I can see with that, I'm speaking for Lowell now, but it's like, what if, you know, like, so to me, that means that like, if the restaurant was closed, he could invite his own friends and family over and drink and have a party there, like, nobody would care. But like, you know, how do you separate, like, if a friend of his is an employee, then we're micromanaging who his friends are? I don't know. It just, you know, so, so you're saying an employee who is working or just any, so anybody who works there cannot drink with him at that restaurant, period?
Other than the other owner.
Yeah, it's the on-duty, off-duty part that is the real wiggle room for me. It's just, it's the off-duty when things go south.
Right, so.
Keeping the boss happy, you know, you're walking past the office and they're in there. Yours is off the clock and he's off the clock, but you're not out of the building yet.
Yeah.
So he could have a private party and he could drink with his friends and.
It's when the employees are there that they're not safe. And, you know, I'd be happy not to do this, but I think we just have enough evidence in the other three businesses, four perhaps, trying to fix the problem. I think.
The council needs to change this law for the planning committee, but how it is is just so uncomfortable.
I know, but you can't just walk away and pretend it's not real. So.
Yeah.
Just.
So, okay, so I'm going to take a stab at language here and see if I've captured it. So to replace the current number. Only through the chair, otherwise it's not an interactive process. And I'm sorry, if you could come up to the microphone, sorry.
So just to clarify, drinking after hours in a restaurant with friends, it's still under the city's alcohol license, right? So I'm just seeing how shady, you know, you guys are really dissecting it, but it's still under the alcohol. It's not like a house. So just putting it out there.
Yeah, I think my point, I was trying to protect the workers.
Right, but it could be a very shady area. Friends afterward, you know, it's like, keep it clean. Because how will that be reported? So, you know, it is, it is an alcohol license for that restaurant, which is not a home. If you're going to do that, do it at home. Anyway.
Thank you, Karen. That's true.
Yeah.
I still feel that's within our realm.
Yeah, and then that way, there is no concern about whether employees are friends or whatever. If you just can't consume in that location. I don't know. Does that, does that sound unreasonable?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, I mean, and I am in no way trying to defend Mr. Sheldon, but, you know, we're not, we're not a jury. This isn't a legal proceeding. No one's under oath. There have been many allegations made, and I have no doubt that some of them may be very true. But I'm just wondering, at what point, you know, is this like a lifetime ban? Is this going to carry on indefinitely? Or, you know, is there some point where we'll say, okay, it's okay for him to drink in the restaurant, it's okay for him to do this? Like, is there some threshold or is there some, you know, at what point do we say it's okay? Or do we just say, it's never going to be okay? Please don't ever come back to us. This is, you know.
So I can, for the legality part of that, I can advise the commission. So first off, so the city council in their final approval did include that one-year provision, so don't come back next month kind of a thing, right? I would suggest that you may want to replace that with, is that another year? Or is it another, what is it that your expectation might be? You can't say this is permanent because you're not allowed to tie the hands of future decision makers. But you are allowed to, like council did, put in a timeframe or, you know. And we did hear some comments like, hey, there have not been any problems. What is the, you know, the training wheels or the baby step forward that the commission might be willing to take? And that's frankly what city council had, had included in that resolution as a way forward for the applicant, should they, should they choose. And that was based on the public, I'm just going to reiterate, it's called public testimony and there was valid public testimony that you all heard and that the city council all heard, upon which you made those decisions. And that, we heard tonight, you've heard additional public comment both for and against. So you've heard additional public testimony. It doesn't invalidate old public testimony. And so the city councils, you know, in their condition, I do appreciate the work condition because I think that is a reasonable, you know, nexus with government to be able to, you know, to make sure that he's allowed to work in his business. The, but yeah, the city council condition is that he could apply for an amendment to allow him to consume alcohol as a member of the public. And that the planning commission would review that. So I do actually have concerns about it being not when it's a member of the public because of that, that condition of approval. And so I do, you know, you can, I think if you want to go there, but the council's direction in that condition was as a member of the public. And I think part of that was to keep away from those gray areas. And I've had conversations with the planning commissioners, as I noted, in revising these conditions because of those potential gray areas.
So, okay.
Can I ask a question? So, well, actually, to answer you, I don't think it should be in perpetuity. That's ridiculous. You know, it's like, I was hoping to approve it tonight. I was hoping he came in and was like, oh, you know, I mean, that would have been my dream, this whole thing is. I was hoping he came in and was like, oh, you know, I mean, that would have been my dream, this whole thing is over and, you know. But my question is, whatever we decide tonight, Mr. Sheldon can go ahead and appeal it again to city council, right? Or is this?
Anyone could appeal this decision tonight to city council, that is true.
So it probably will be.
You could.
It probably will.
However, I think, I think what you guys are all doing is important because it is still part of the public record that city council would, would need, be revealing. So your job is really important tonight.
Gotcha.
So I guess my question is still, you know, so, yeah, we could put another year, you can come and reapply another year to get another condition removed. But I'm just wondering, like, is there, like, what would he, I feel like we should provide some kind of like, this is what we're looking for. You know, what are we looking for that we would, you know, give him that approval when the time comes? So he can say, okay, I met this barrier, then I can have the expectation that would happen. Because I feel like we're, you know, it's just in this weird spot of, well, you know, he says these things and I don't know, you know, it's just this, I feel, I don't know, I just, the whole thing is obviously a mess and we all know that. But I'm just wondering, you know, we were kind of at the split vote tonight. Is there a point where, you know, we can allow this to happen in the way that most businesses are able to operate? And I don't, you know, I'm just wondering from.
Yeah, you know, I would, I would say, you know, if, again, in this particular case, it was if there were no complaints, you know, you'd come back and review it. And like commissioner said, you know, had he come and said, hey, you know, he learned and, and this is what, what he's done and gone to these classes and so forth, then I would feel okay having a year go by. I'm still not gonna feel real super comfortable after two years with no complaints, but I would, at that point, I would be willing then to say, hey, you know, if there's been no complaints, then we can loosen things up at that point. So I, I, you know, I just, again, I think it's just a little more time is what I'm asking for. And, you know, another year, if that's what commissioners are okay with.
Okay. I feel uncomfortable with us coming up with a set of criteria for him because that feels really uncomfortable and totally out of my, like, I just, but I feel like when you know, you'll know. Like, when he walks in and there's no mention of me too, and like, it's just like, hey, I want to blah, blah, blah. It's been a year, things are going great, you know, thank you guys for seeing me again tonight. And, you know, I mean, you know, not negating the truth, you can't negate videos and like, and die, and things that really happened. And just, that would show me that he owns it, he gets it, he's humble, he came in, he wa, you know. I, I just, I think when you know, you know, you know, it's like, I was hoping that this was a quick thing tonight and we all passed it. I was hoping he walked in and said, thank you so much for seeing me again tonight, I really appreciate the opportunity. And, you know, I realize I've made some mistakes in the past, I'm ready to move forward, put it behind me and make sure that my team members are safe, you know, here's what I've done to do that. I've done this, I've done this, here's what I'm going to be doing and, you know, let it go. And I would have been like, yes, you know, great, like, that's, that's what you can ask for. So I think the onus is in his court, not ours, in my opinion.
I hope he watches the rest of this hearing tonight and hears you say that, Debbie.
Sheriff Fernandez, we do have a member of the public who has not commented on Zoom. If you wanted to recognize that, you could.
Sure, I'll recognize that.
Okay, so Kyle Falba, we do see that your hand is raised and Suzie's gonna allow you to unmute yourself.
Thanks so much. So I just want to point out a couple of things, especially if you're considering continuing this on for another year, is that the original application for this business, they submitted a menu that was that of a bar and not of a restaurant. And then following this, after conditions of approval, there was off sale of alcohol that was taking place. That was, again, outside of the scope of what their allowable license allowed for them. Following this, on a checkup, we learned that they did not retain the, a consistent HR consulting firm. There was a lapse. We still don't even know that the current consulting, HR consulting firm, what the period of time in which they've been hired for is. And then also the conditions about the, the training, that there was this huge gap in time in which the training was to be taking place and it didn't happen until just a week and a half ago. So I think there's a lot of things that are visible in terms of things that have happened over the last year that would help drive the conditions that you may want to be expressing to the business owner moving forward as to what it is you're actually looking for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, I think we were. Two of us were in support of the language we had and you weren't, but you had issues. I think we're still trying to work out what you would need to vote. Yes, or if, and I don't want to force you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, we can put a stipulation that he can reapply in a year. You know.
Isn't that already in?
So the, actually, I did pull it up in Word so that I could edit it if you all, now that you guys are at this point.
I thought that was.
What is currently in it, in the conditions of approval? And I'm gonna go to the amended, the proposed amended, so that we can change those as desired. That is that the use permit shall be reviewed after a period of one year after the restaurant commences operations by the planning commission. At that time, the planning commission may modify the conditions of approval to allow Lowell Sheldon to consume alcohol on the premises as a member of the dining public. This shall constitute a request for an amendment to a use permit with the applicant responsible for applying for this review, which is what has happened. So since this says one year after the restaurant commences, that would just need to be changed to be one year after approval of this amendment. And then we would just reference the application file numbers that we have.
And you bring up a good point as far as conditions, you bring up a good point as far as conditions. Because let's say there are no issues in Spasbo, but his new restaurant has all kinds of issues. That would be something to kind of consider. So, you know, I, I think I'm comfortable with the, as you just, the language you just mentioned for that. And then again, come back for review and, you know, again, we can discuss it or the commission at time can discuss it and make the decision at that point. But, yeah, allowing him to, you know, again, okay, there've been no issues, so we can allow him to fill in on shifts and stuff. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so this would change, so you're saying change this use permit, this language I just read to be one year from now?
Yeah.
Basically, okay. And then you're after. Yeah, you, you can choose whatever timeframe you'd want, but it sounds like Sheriff Fernandez is interested in one year.
Yeah.
After the amend.
So it's kind of like baby, baby steps now he's actually working in the restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, if the, if there wasn't, that alcohol was very closely related to and brought up each time, you know, I would be okay with kind of making that baby step, but I don't, I don't at this point.
Okay, and so I'm gonna say. Okay, so here is, is what I would propose for that, and I'll underlie that. Which is, this use permit shall be reviewed after a period of one year. After the amendment to the use permit, file 2023-054, which is this application, approval is finalized. Because obviously if this is appealed and then goes further and nothing happens with it until three months from now, then, you know, you still want it to be one year after, because I'm hearing the intent is one year after Mr. Sheldon starts working shifts. If there's still, if, if there's no issues at that point. At that time, the planning commission may modify the conditions of approval to allow Lowell Sheldon to consume alcohol on premises as a member of the dining public. And you can also modify that if you'd like to at this time, if, you know, if you just want it to say to consume alcohol in some form or another or whatever to, so that you can determine at that time. This shall constitute a request for an amendment to a use permit with the applicant responsible for applying for this review.
But isn't he already allowed to consume alcohol as a member of the public?
No, not at all, no, he's not allowed. So the current condition is three, which is Lowell Sheldon shall not serve or consume alcohol in any capacity while on the premises. So there's, currently, there's no alcohol.
Okay.
Right, but he's gonna be allowed to serve because of his shift working, yeah.
Yes. And so, yeah, so that condition, I'm gonna take out the highlighted, which was staff's recommendation. And we'll unstrike that out. I think that was a suggestion that.
With no employees, I would, with no employees.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's actually the, the condition we're on right now. So Lowell Sheldon shall not, I'm striking out, serve or, because obviously he may serve, although there's plenty of times when you could serve and you serve the food, but not the wine. But, but I think that's, you know, the commission is saying, he can serve the alcohol, he can't consume it. So Lowell Sheldon shall not consume alcohol in any capacity while on the premises. And this is where, is there any forbearing of that or not? Or notwithstanding?
So this, this means he still couldn't drink alcohol after hours?
As currently written, this is just saying he can't consume alcohol on the premises, period.
Yeah.
He can serve it, but he can't.
Feel comfortable because he and Berlin may be cooking up something and tasting with the wine there rather than in their own homes.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I think the issue is when employees are, are, when employees are on the premises. While employees are on the premises.
And, you know, there's no way to, to monitor that, but all we can do is just at least do our part to, you know, provide whatever protection we can.
Okay, so this would be while, shall not consume alcohol in any capacity while on the premises when any employees are present.
Well, not and.
Not an and, the and doesn't work yet.
While any employees are present.
Yeah, doesn't the on the premises?
Employees are on the premises. That's the logical.
Got it.
On the premises, yeah, thank you, I feel very, very relieved with that.
Pardon me?
Yes, a cook is, the chef is an employee. So this would, one of the owners would need to be cooking the, the food, which is.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're not gonna be in the kitchen and, you know, if he's gonna be drinking when there's a cook there, it could happen. But at least we've made our attempt, right? We can't have somebody there, but at least we stated that, so.
Right, so this would be, you know, any, so Lowell Sheldon shall not consume alcohol in any capacity while any employees are on the premises.
Can I, can I?
Should that be singular? Should employee be singular? Employee is.
While any employee is, yeah, thank you.
Depending on how they have their company structured, the other owner could be an employee. So if you're okay with the other owner drinking with him, you might want to put in there, but the other owner, it's okay. Because it sounds like you guys are okay with the other owner.
Yeah, usually you're.
An employee if you have an LLC and you're C corporate.
Okay, okay, you're right.
Yeah, I believe they, so.
Technically be an employee.
In.
The other owner, I don't know what their legal entity is, but if you're okay with him drinking with the other owner, you might want to put that in there.
He, I believe, because they described that their alcohol license with the county needed to include Lowell as well as Jeff, as well as Noah, who's just not on the premises from day to day, all needed to be on the alcohol license because they are all owners. So I believe they would be, and, and I, if there's any interpretation, it comes down to me. And I fully understand what you guys are saying is that Jeff is considered an owner in this case.
Can I suggest we strike in any capacity? Because that's kind of not really necessary.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only one way.
Sure, yeah.
There's only one way, there's only one way to consume alcohol that I know of, generally, I guess you could.
I am curious about this decision. With a liquor license, there is for anybody, amount of liquor you can serve one person, is that right?
So there are responsible beverage service requirements, and that is the training, which the city has as a standard for any alcohol license.
Drink ten drinks in a bar and.
It probably depends on how long they are, but it, there is, there's a level at which they, and I'm not an expert on this, our police chief would be, but there is a level at which someone is clearly inebriated and you are not supposed to be serving them at that point. And obviously, that might be one drink for someone like me and ten for someone else.
Okay, I'm okay with that language.
Okay, so I would like to just go through, because there are a couple of other conditions that have been changed, just to kind of go through them at this point. So under item one, what would be struck under this is Lowell's right to enter the premises shall be no greater than any other member of the public, with Jeff Berlin shall also be present. This would, obviously, with his working shifts, allow him, that would be struck. Staff shall review the CUP after the restaurant commences operations. That is being struck and the new condition related to that, which I think is still fine. The applicant shall provide the planning department with a progress report on any new complaints filed for the restaurant at the six month and year period from the approval date of this use permit amendment. And I would actually like to change that to be final approval, because that's seven days from now, assuming it's not appealed. Just to make sure that's not this approval date, but the final approval, once it's not an appealable action. The planning department shall review the CUP six months and one year after these amended conditions of approval take effect. So we'll have, we'll be doing what we did before, which was making sure that it's operating as it should, contacting the outside HR firms. The review shall be a staff level review. However, the planning director shall have the discretion to elevate to a planning commission review. That's always generally the case with our code, but just to be clear. And then the next is the addition of the, the condition related to his being allowed to work shifts. I don't think we need to go over that one again. And then Lowell Sheldon shall not consume alcohol while any employee is on the premises.
And then for the, the HR firm, was there a condition for a period of time? Or what it, how did, how was that worded on here?
That was just that they shall entertain, that they shall, I, I, I think we amended that, so I'll go, I'll look through that here, yeah.
Okay.
Nope, thank you. So, yes, Payala LLC shall engage in all times retain an outside human resources firm to manage all aspects of employee complaints. And this isn't necessarily poly, but all aspects of employee complaints, issues or concerns.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And then the use permit shall be reviewed after a period of one year. After the amendment to the use permit approval is finalized. At that time, the planning commission may modify the conditions to allow Lowell Sheldon to consume alcohol on the premises as a member of the dining public. This shall constitute a request for amendment to the use permit. And so the question I had there is, do you want to delete the as a member of a dining public? Or do you want to leave that in as future guidance to your future selves? Let's see.
You know, I, I would just, I guess, yeah, I would leave it in there, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only way it's gonna be allowed, you know, he could ask for change, but.
Sure, okay. And right now, they had to ask for this to be struck violations of any of conditions two or three.
But with the and ors, yeah.
And or four, so this was, that, that was actually a change that was because something was being deleted in the prior one that is not now. So two is the working onsite but not managing employees. Otherwise, three is the consuming of alcohol. And I don't think it makes sense to have four, which is just simply the use permit thing. So it was two and or three may by itself constitute ground for revocation of the subject use permit. And I do want to note on that, we got a couple of comments that, hey, Lowell's been drinking onsite for months now. That is hearsay. If someone has a valid complaint, they need to submit it to the planning department at the time. And that could be as simple as a photograph or something like that. That is not, you know, we will investigate things, but. we will investigate things, but that is not something the commission needs to.
Right, yeah, it's hearsay, even somebody saying, well, my friend even has a video on it. Well, bring it forward.
Right, right, no one submitted anything like that, so.
Yet he also might have been dining.
Without drinking, yeah, yeah, that is possible. So, yeah, so at any rate, there is, no evidence has been submitted to the planning department for that or anyone else in the city. And then the other condition is the business owner shall ensure that, and I think this would be helpful to include, that all personnel, including owners, are drug and alcohol free while on duty, instead of just employees. That's probably a good standard condition to add. Correct, yeah, that that all personnel, not just the employees, be drug and alcohol free.
That's the while on duty part, but the off-duty part, I think we.
Okay, so that is, those are the changes, the conditions that staff had recommended, as well as what the commission has deliberated tonight.
I make a motion, we approve the amended use permit conditions. With the amended use permit with these amended conditions.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. There's no further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Ottinger? Yes, Commissioner Burns? Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes three, one, three, one, one, that being three ayes, one no, one abstention. Okay, thank you very much.
Right, and our poor commissioner waiting out there.
Yeah, can we do a quick five-minute recess again while we get the other commissioner? Thank you. So important for you to be here.
I, I think it's reasonable what you guys, what you guys say. I guess what. I believe you on anything.
It's just the way he is.
So that's supposed to smell power.
Recording stopped.
But yeah, thank you. I'm going to take off that.
So you should.
Okay, good. I made myself sit through the whole thing. My fault.
How are the lights doing?
Really good.
Good, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're all off and there's one little light.
Yeah.
Same the dumper is lit up. Yeah, yeah, no, the other. Yeah, but it's a huge difference, especially with this lighting.
Yeah.
So. And now we have to look at all that graffiti on the green.
Yeah.
That is.
Correct, yeah.
Attend to that. I haven't brought that up to anyone's attention.
Okay. I'll make them.
And I think that the other property is still under.
They're still working through some of the. So.
There's a lot that. And then there's a lot of. So.
Yes.
Start chatting.
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted to miss in the last hundred and forty.
Yeah.
I'll do that. Yeah.
From my understanding, it doesn't change yet. Yeah, I have a good one.
Okay, I'm ready to bring this back to order.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, accidentally hit leave meeting. Okay, there we go. Okay. Moving on to item six A, SAV's quarterly report.
Thank you. I'm just going to save those conditions of approval now that they're done, to make sure we have those. Okay, so this next item is a quarterly report on the 24/7 RV Village operated by Sonoma Applied Villages, also not my saves or SAVs. And this is a temporary use permit for a 24/7 RV Village to operate for two years that began January of this year. And is, the temporary use permit is valid until December 2024. As part of the approval, quarterly reports are being provided to both the city council and the planning commission. And you are, as part of this use permit review, if there are any conditions that need to be addressed, you can discuss those. The quarterly report this quarter, I will say, so Vice Mayor Rich and myself are appointed by council. She's appointed by council, I'm appointed by the city manager to serve as the housing and homeless liaisons for the city council. And so we have been giving them quarterly reports on those issues as well as this. This is the site at eight four five Grabenstein Highway North is owned by St. Vincent de Paul, as many of you may know. They are planning to do a permanent affordable housing development there. They have applied for a project home key state grant for that. And that was actually in partnership with the city. I worked with them, council passed a resolution supporting that, and I worked with them to submit that, because it does need to be in conjunction with the local agency being the submitter. If they get that grant, they may be starting the construction as early as spring of this next year, so spring 2024. So Saves at this point is planning, doing their transit, has started their transition planning early. The original use permit had been the, I think it was the the fourth quarter or the fifth quarter, so that we asked them to actually start transition planning earlier since they have informed that St. Vincent de Paul may need the site back by spring, by March. And I know the commission as well, so the council were very concerned. Commissioner Ottinger, actually, I believe, brought forth that condition to make sure we have quarterly report, the transition planning in place to make sure that the residents there are placed, and it's not a rush or an emergency. So the quarterly report is, Vice Mayor Rich and I met with the CEO Adrian Brumley. And he has put this report together, which is a little bit more metric face focused, which I think is, the council is very appreciative. Hopefully, the commission is as well. The, so they're, you know, how many clients are getting IDs, how many clients are? And so for the site exit preparation, which is the last component of it, and that's one I want to kind of focus on tonight, because it is somewhat coming up. It's also one of the major considerations. So they currently have 23 RVs, or 22 RVs, 23 clients, I believe it is, is what it is, on the site. They have identified eight trailer spots at what is formally called the Gold Coin Hotel, but will, is being renovated by St. Vincent de Paul to be, and it will be called St. Vincent de Paul Commons, I believe. And that is currently under construction, and so those will be available at the time, in the timeframe necessary. The Horizon Shine residents have all been also entered into the county's what's called coordinated entry, which is the county system for placing based on priority and preferences and need, you know, appropriate. If someone's a veteran and they need veteran housing, it's available, kind of matching those assignments. The, so everyone, they've been discussing with coordinated entry of Sonoma County to make sure that they are trying to secure vouchers. They have everyone entered in coordinated entry, and they're currently going through and making sure that everyone is up to date with their information, because that's assessment of need and what is going on with an individual as part of the the process there. So they also have, Saves has also applied to operate an 80-person safe parking site. And that is actually a site on Russ, it's called the Russell Avenue site. If you are familiar with the county admin campus, right now there is a, I believe it's 24 or 26 safe parking RVs, kind of tents down by permit Sonoma and Fiscal Drive. The county is looking to relocate those, as well as add additional spaces to about 80 spaces of either kind of tiny home tents or RVs on Russell Avenue, which is vacant, kind of vacant land on the north side of the county admin parcel. Sort of east of the freeway, on the north side of the county admin side. They don't know the results of that, but there was an RFP for that, but they will know towards the end of this month, beginning of this next month. That site could potentially house the rest of the clients. And I think even if, having some of our other council members and Una Glass, who's the continuum of care representative for West County, and also, of course, our former mayor and council member, are continuing discussions with the county, so that even if Saves doesn't manage the site, to see if there's availability for spaces there for those residents. And of course, there's also potential for, through coordinated entry, permanent housing. And they are working, and I know the last count, there was someone who may, you know, currently be eligible for that when something comes up, so. So they're definitely focused on that. The building official eye during this quarter did do a site visit. The fire department also did a site visit to the site. There were some corrections that needed to be done. And, you know, making sure fire extinguishers were available in the appropriate locations, making sure cords weren't out in the, in the driving aisles to make sure that those didn't become fire hazards, those types of things. So Steve Brown and I visited the site probably a month and a half ago now, and talked with the residents along with the board members. And so they have been, they're sort of have an ongoing process, and what we agreed to is that Saves would do a monthly inspection. Our fire department would do a quarterly inspection, just to make sure things weren't falling, you know, through the, and making sure that there wasn't a lot of, you know, garbage or storage in outside areas where there wasn't supposed to be that kind of thing. And so those are the two major things that have happened in the last quarter, or quarter plus a month or so. The coordinated entry has been an ongoing component of it. But they are continuing to have their villager meetings, their weekly meetings with the residents, and those types of things. So I think those are the main things I have to report on that. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
What, do you have any questions? No.
I just comment that I'm glad St. Vincent de Paul is able to move forward with the building, and that I'm really proud of Sebastopol and the work that you and city staff have done to to promote this safe place for people to put their RVs and to live, rather than more street.
Yep, I think it's a, it's going to make significant difference to some of those people's lives, so, well done.
Thank you. And we all know it's obviously, as I have said from the beginning, and as part of the approval, it is a temporary solution, but it is. Saves is doing a great job, I think, on looking at, you know, what's next for that, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And any subcommittee updates? And if not, move on to planning director's report.
Okay, so a couple of items. Let's see, I'll go over policy and upcoming items on agenda, and then we'll go over projects, as I know John has a couple of updates as well. So in terms of policy, the design review board last Tuesday held their third or fourth, third, I think? Their third hearing on the final, on the the public review draft of the objective design standards. They did make some additional modifications, but they did, and I don't think most of theirs are substantive. I think the main one that they did have, which I shared at a prior meeting, is to to ensure that it was, that those guidelines are, those objective standards are for use for SB 35 projects, or where objective design standards are required only. They do feel that subjective design guidelines provide more freedom and and room for imagination and creativity. But understand, on a whole, it was not a unanimous vote, but on a whole, it was passed the same resolution to recommend it to city council. It will be going to city council at their December 5th meeting for their, for their review of that. The, let's see, the other long-range items, we are working, continuing to work with Optico's to get the final draft, the public review draft of the SB nine single-family lot split standards, which will be coming up. We are planning on doing a joint meeting with the DRB and the planning commission, likely that would be the second meeting in November. Oh, sorry, your, your second meeting, which is the fourth week, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. That's their regular meeting date, so it'd just be switching the time instead of a whole different day for them to to try to find it. We would do that starting at the the 6:00 PM planning commission meeting time, most likely. The other items, the budget committee has been reviewing revenue options for the city. The city council had a big discussion at their last council meeting. And are bringing that back as a potential, some of those potential measures to their November 7th meeting, so their next, next Tuesday is Halloween, but the next Tuesday after that, so in two weeks' time. So they will be discussing that. The council did pass the resolution to accept the Caltrans grant, that's a sustainable transportation grant. If anyone is interested, and I know I've sent it to a couple of people already, but the scope of work that's proposed for that is included in that staff report, as well as the full grant application. And I've gotten some interested public who are excited about the project, so it is available there. And I'm going to let John talk about the transportation planning.
Yes, so last month, SETA and Fair and Peers provided the planning commission for the first milestone update for the act of, the countywide act of transportation plan. Um, they are going to be holding a, one of their first public engagement series, um, at the farmer's market here in Sebastopol on November fifth. Um, so I encourage anybody in the public or commissioners to attend that, to provide any feedback, um, for that plan. There is two, um, additional major, um, public outreach events coming in the future, one in the spring of next year. And then, uh, once again, in the fall of, um, next year. And then, uh, city staff will also try to coordinate a few, um, additional outreach events in between those times to get as much information to the, um, consultant for that, um, plan, because I know a lot of people are excited about adding that and updating the, um, old bike and pedestrian plan that I believe is about ten to fifteen years old. Um, and I believe that's it on the transportation side. Oh, yes, um, the other, um, bike and pedestrian plan that's being updated is the, um, uh, Caltrans is working on their bike and pedestrian master plan. Um, both of those links to the surveys and maps are on the city's, um, website for the planning department. Under the bike and pedestrian section of the planning department. Um, so if you're interested in, uh, looking at that, uh, if you can't find it on the website, let me know and I'll, um, I'll send you the direct link to it. But that was part of the, um, community advisory planning or bike and pedestrian, um, advisor committee that I sit on as part of the, um, countywide Sebastopol rep.
Um, all right, so a couple of project and other meeting updates. Um, so as you heard in public comment, Ives Park Phase One pathway is under construction right now. Um, I have not heard back on the potential grant for the phase two of that. Um, so, um, we'll see where that goes, but so hopefully we can use that. We do have measure M money for the match for that if need, that's the measure M sales tax for parks. Um, not the measure M sales tax for roads, I don't know why they named them the same, uh, letter. Um, so that is going, um, going forward and looking forward to having that done. Um, the, after this meeting, um, I believe nine o'clock, uh, was the date, the city's emails and, um, web domain are actually changing from dot org to dot gov. Um, if you're emailing anyone from the city, it doesn't matter if you use dot org or dot gov, it will still be forwarded to us for a very long time. Um, but, um, well, if you do remember to change all of our emails to dot gov, um, it's kind of a security measure. It's a little bit harder to spoof, uh, dot gov email than it is a doc org. So, but from that perspective is, uh, the main reason why the city is changing that, it's very difficult to get a dot gov domain if, unless you're a gov. Uh, and so that's kind of why, it's much easier to get a dot org and pretend you're somebody else. Um, and then we do have a, um, meeting coming up on, and Susie, I'm gonna ask you, is it November fourth, the airport meeting? Okay, um, so at the Center for the Arts, um, and I'm gonna ask Susie to grab the time for it as well. I've been recording with District Five Supervisor Hopkins' office. The airport right now is doing a, what's called in the approach study to look at potential alternative approaches to the airport. Um, as many of you may know, the number and frequency of flights coming in, going and landing over Sebastopol and District Five has increased substantially in the last few years. Uh, what happened, my understanding is, um, and we aren't the only community dealing with this, um, the FAA changed some of the regulations quite a while ago to, rather than when they're coming in for approach, doing it based on landmarks, so they used to go over Two Rock and then come in basically over buddy, over nobody. Um, they changed to GPS. Uh, that was an FAA regulation change, they thought everything would stay the same. It didn't, as you may have noticed, um, flights are, you know, planes are doing what's the most gas fuel efficient or whatever, and we're getting a lot of flights. Uh, I get a lot of complaints. Um, and the airport, about eighty or to ninety percent of their complaints are now from District Five. Um, yeah, and they have been increasing and people are just really frustrated. So the airport is doing a community, a couple of community meetings, one in Windsor, uh, which is obviously also impacted by the airport. And one in Sebastopol, the one in Sebastopol is November second, thank you, November second at the Sebastopol Center for the Arts, and it starts at, what time, we're gonna grab you the time, so that is actually the consultant for that approach study. Um, the airport isn't necessarily promoting this, so I, we as a city are trying to promote it and, and get folks out. Okay, six PM, um, six PM to eight PM, and so, um, I think it'd be great if our commissioners were there, as members of the public. Um, this isn't something that comes before US of body, so you don't need to worry about a quorum, um, in that. Um, but yeah, so that is coming up. Uh, so that's November second at six PM at the Center for the Arts. Um, and Supervisor Hopkins will be sending out an email blast as will we about that meeting. Um, and then again, November seventh, city council meeting, uh, their main discussion point will be sales tax. Um, they will later, and I'm not sure when, but they will be, if you probably heard, there is, has been a water rate and a sewer rate study. Uh, and so they will be considering that at, uh, not November seventh, but at a later time in the next couple of months or so. They did have a presentation at a recent meeting that has the information, um, and so that will be coming back to them on that. Um, in terms of the planning items, we do have some planning items, they did get shifted because of the, uh, the sales tax discussions. Um, the planning commission work plan and our level of service report, uh, will be the December, I believe it's the nineteenth. Thank you. It's hard to do this out of my memory, I'm trying, I'm trying my best. Um, the, uh, so, so that will be discussion of the planning commission work plan. Um, the, as well as any items they might want to talk about. I know we have had a couple of people comment to council about the tiny homes, and so I know that's on the radar. Um, council member Zelman has brought that up, up a couple of times. Um, I also did get a question today, there is, because there is a new state law that passed, uh, that does allow a city to allow people to basically condo wise and sell their eighty US a condo, um, and whether or not that is something the city would want to do. I don't really know much about that law yet, um, but they have a, a couple of upcoming legal sessions to, to learn more about that. Uh, it's an opt-in, the city doesn't require to do it, would it be, make sense to do or not, is it something people are gonna actually do? Um, Paul, I know you work with a number of folks, so if you have any thoughts, that'd be great, but otherwise, those types of things may come up with the planning commission work plan. It's fine that it's delayed a little bit because the, our work plan for the next few months is, is all the, those grant component pieces that we're, uh, we had looked at that are kind of managed by the grants. Um, we did get the draft of the VMT, vehicle mile, mile travel policy that would be coming back to you, um, yesterday, I believe, so we will be able to, uh, so John and I will be reviewing that. And then, uh, for city ventures, that is the eighty unit project, um, behind O'Reilly on the north side of town. John and I are wrapping up our review of the admin draft, um, and it'll probably be a fairly quick turnaround for the public draft to come out. Uh, that will have a forty-five day review period, and we will be having a hearing as one of your planning commission meetings, um, or as least a part of your planning commission meeting, um, uh, during that timeframe, so. Few goodies coming up.
Okay, any questions?
Any word on the hotel?
Um, so their permit, their building permit was extended, uh, they do have, uh, until spring and, um, I know they did, uh, they are preparing a letter for council, um, on my request, because I get the same questions from council. Uh, but they have submitted a lot merger application, um, it's sort of a little bit weirdly technical, but PG&E. So if you recall, they have solar panels on the parking lot and the main site is where the hotel is, uh, across from the plaza. In order to transmit the, lay the electrical lines between the two, they have to merge lots in terms of PG&E. From the planning department, that's fine, because you can't decouple the parking with the park, with the hotel anyway, so. Uh, so we're in the, so they've submitted that and we are in the process of, uh, processing that, and so in the next month, that'll probably be done. Um, but otherwise, they are still waiting for federal approval of their archaeology recovery plan, um, which is a condition of their funding, so. Uh, but I am in, in contact with them quite a bit, so, yeah, they are definitely still interested and moving forward. Um, and then one quick note on Woodmark, um, the building official, I, I did a site visit today. Um, but just if you do go past the site, you can see that the retaining walls at the frontage, uh, have been poured. Um, and there's a really big high hill of dirt that is not permanent, that's not the permanent height. Um, they will be starting, um, sort of to backfill, that's the backfill for the retaining walls along with the gravel and the drainage. Um, they will be starting that on Monday, um, and hopefully finishing it in the next couple of weeks before they start to power the foundations for the building. So they're, they're moving along, um, but I can't wait until that dirt pile is gone and behind the retaining walls, because as you can imagine, a lot of folks from the community think that might be the final. Want to show people that's not the final look of the project, it won't be a thirty-five foot tall, you know, terrace. Um, so, but that project is, is, uh, going on, we are starting to get questions about, uh, how to get an apartment there. Uh, so there's definitely a lot of need and interest in the community there. Um, and if you are interested in that, I'm gonna just say for anyone in the public or knows someone who may be, the occupancy is likely towards the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, but on our city website, if you go to, um, I'm gonna just show you all this, uh, since, so that you know how to use this as well and anyone from the public, um, does this well. Uh, if you go to our city website, uh, um, there's the change to dot gov, which will also be cityofsebastopol.gov will be the website. Um, if you go to building and development projects, you, there's actually now a map feature on our new website that shows the location of the various projects and their status. So, um, and this might be really helpful for you all if you're talking to your constituency and they have questions. So, like, here's the Woodmark site, um, it, you know, has a quick thing and then you can learn more, this is all of the, um, you know, includes all of the documents from the approval, if anyone's interested in that, project updates, um, so, you know, currently they're working on phase one, we have a map of what that is. Um, there's an updated traffic study, but under the overview, there is actually a link to the applicant's website, and there's an email for rental inquiries. So if you know anyone who is looking and, and inquiring, you can direct them there, um, or to city staff, because we can get them in touch as well. And that has all of the kind of major projects that are going on, um, in that.
Okay. Any questions, further question? Okay, thank you for that, and I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, uh, to the next planning commission meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six PM.